Evening, everyone. Welcome to the Skookil Township December 13, 2023, meeting of the Board of Supervisors. And we'll call it order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And first and foremost, we'd like to introduce our newest member to the board, John Callahan. Welcome, John. John's been attending some meetings for a bit to get up to speed. And welcome to the gauntlet, I mean, the board. Appreciate your service. All right. For roll call, we have tonight myself, Robert Cooney, Martha Majeski, Mark Donovan, Danielle Jewen, and John Callahan. Okay, we did have an exec session November 30, 2023, to discuss possible litigation, land acquisition, and personnel matters. And again, tonight, before this meeting, we also had an exec session meeting. And we'll kick off tonight. James and team are here, I think, to do, just James?
Just James.
All right, just James. I'm looking around like, nope, no team.
James is in team.
Yep. James is the team. So James is going to give us an update on the feasibility study for the municipal complex and get us updated.
All right, microphone check, good. All right, so I'm James Margata with Alloy Five Architecture. I was here with you guys just about a month ago to present where we were at that time. This is our final presentation for the study portion of the Skookil Township job on our end. So just a quick overview again. Our study is typically comprised of three phases, those phases being data collection and evaluation, preliminary design and concept design phase. The last meeting at the November 13-ish was up until Phase One and Two. So within that last month, we've worked with the township to vet out some design. So we are now at the end of our concept design phase. I'd like to give you a snapshot of what that is. Again, we've been working with you guys for about three months now. For the purpose of this study, we are referring to two sites within this complex. Site One is the building we're in now, the Administration and Police Department Building. Site Two is the, what we're calling the Public Works Buildings, the original stone building and the garage building. So those are the buildings that encompass this feasibility study. So we went into this heavier last time, but just to give you a quick summary, part of the prior phases were building condition studies. So those take two large categories, building conditions and building usages. And usage really takes into consideration functionality and the way the space is working for you. So just the report card, if you may, of those evaluations, which you all have from the last meeting, tells the story of buildings that are, you know, in typical building lifespan, 70-ish years, 60, 70 years. Your buildings are aging well. They're, you know, about 30 years old. The conditions, they've definitely been maintained and have kept, and kudos to you for that. The usage portion of that seems to be where we're going to address with our planning solutions. So we're calling the usage the critical addressing that we need to do for both buildings. So again, we're calling them planning solutions for both sites. This site in particular, Site One, a building renovation and a small addition. And the Site Two, infrastructure improvements and a small addition as well. And for both sites, we're including site improvements. So a big piece that was developed in the last month was the site improvement. So this image shows an aerial view of this site. So it's kind of a workaround here, starting from the left, which is the roads department in the original building. So we're calling, we have two locations at this point for that addition, small addition we mentioned for the garage bays. We'll get into that as we dive into that. But since we're still in the sort of concept phase, we didn't quite get that vetted through in the last month, but we do have a 1,400 square foot addition planned, only one, not two. Once, you know, once we take the next steps, that will definitely be sort of conclusive in where that is. Definite site upgrades, repaving and various site upgrades over there. It was mentioned a few times about the potential for the original stone building to be used for the public. So we're including enhanced parking. I think we're adding five spaces over there. Working your way towards the building that we're in now, we're calling for a sidewalk, connection sidewalk, which was originally planned, was never quite built, but hopefully you'll be able to go between buildings now and not be on the grass all the time. And then working into the, this building, Administration Parking Lot, we're calling for the removal of the island in the center of that parking lot to sort of make a more efficient parking layout. Seems to be sustainability principle. We saw that there's some electric vehicle charging stations. We're hoping to enhance that and add a few more in the adjacent location to where they are now, right in front of the building. We're calling for safety, recommending safety bollards around the main entry and part of this building. Safety bollards just help, hopefully, if someone were to drive into this building, the bollard would be a line of defense. Working our way down to the Police Department, so the lower site level, if you may, are recommending some sort of enclosure for the police parking and circulation through the site. So that's towards the rear.
Is that where this red line is?
The red line, yep. So we're calling, or hoping to separate, I think now that's used for both police and public parking. So that vulnerability of having the police be open to the public right there was a big concern. So we're hoping to separate them into two zones. The public zone would then be closer to the direct path of travel to the Police Department. You'll see that to the left of the red line, there's some added parking spaces there. I'll keep going unless there's any pressing. Moving inside, so this is the Admin and Police Department. Revisiting you to this, you've seen this before. We're calling for a two-floor renovation of both spaces, which is totaling between both floors 6,400 square feet and an addition of 1,300 square feet per floor, so 2,600 square feet total. So that would give additional space to both levels, Admin and Police. We've developed that project checklist where we are improving building and site conditions, improving building and site utilization, which speaks to that, how the space is being used, planning for future growth, having department requirements met, and maximizing the spatial layout. I'm not going to go through every one of these. We'll get through, on the next, I go into each plan in depth and they're revisited, but these are the highlights of the overall recommendation. Again, 2,600 square foot addition, and then a renovation of your existing space.
Can you explain, just, so for the Administration Department?
Your microphone.
Thank you, Martha.
For the Administration Department, the first row has existing 1,268, recommended 2,160. Then there is 1,178 square feet and 12, what's the?
Okay, so the colors there, so you have the Administration Department on the left. That teal color represents the, like, formal Administration Department that's over there. The yellow color has been the Assembly Room.
Okay.
Which is what we're in now. So I guess we categorize that column-wise with the Admin Department because it's on this level. So that just shows you what the square footage you have existing and what our recommendation for additional square footage for each one of those departments.
Okay.
So moving back to the, we'll start, we're starting with the lower level this time, which is the Police Department. This is the existing layout. We did take the room tags off for confidentiality, but we do have some highlights. This is how the plan sits existing. The next slide would be demolition, which is kind of reflecting the renovation, full renovation of that level and preparing for the addition, which you see on the third slide. That 1,300 square foot box is keyed with area of addition red dash line on the rear of the site. And you can see the reconfigured space below. So some of the highlights that we'd like to present for the Police Department, we are resizing and adding office space. We are removing the holding cells. It was brought to our attention that they're no longer used based on it being relocated to a different Police Department. We're adding a break room dedicated for the Police Department solely, exclusively. Adding locker rooms, so you'll have a men and women's locker room, conference room just for this department and could be used as a-
Can you show the laser pointer? So where's the break room?
The break room is-
Yes.
Okay, so the highlights are keyed, or most of them are keyed here. The break room happens right here.
Is it on a subsequent slide? Okay.
Break room is highlighted here. The training room is to the far left here. The increased-
I'm sorry, I hadn't slipped to the next slide.
I should narrate when I move, I'll do that when I'm moving between slides now. The increased office area for the touchdown space of the officers is at the bottom or south part of the plan. The new locker rooms are in the addition portion, so you'll see there's one and two. And we are proposing the addition of a secure vestibule and really trying to refine that process of how someone circulates in. So basically, we're adding a layer, how you circulate into this department. So you're buzzed in from the secure vestibule. There's somebody that can see you and help usher you through that process of getting into the department.
One question.
Sure.
So there's one locker room. Currently, we only have male officers.
Yep.
Any thought about if we were to add a female officer to our police force? Any flexibility built into how one would use this?
We're actually dedicating, we're dedicating, male is the larger one, and this is the female locker room.
Oh, okay, okay.
So I had a question.
Sure.
And I don't, this actually may be a question for Lieutenant, too. I noticed there's no Sallyport. Are you okay with that?
There is.
There is, right?
Yeah.
There is, the Sallyport, the Sallyport is not going away, just the, like, covered-
The covered area. The current location of the Sallyport is being relocated to the new site area.
Okay, never mind. What is the Sallyport?
In case Sally comes by, she has a special door.
Someone else? Anyone else want to answer that? It's a location where the police can drive right up with their police car. If they have somebody in custody, they can bring them right in that way.
They can bring them in and-
Am I correct on that, Lieutenant?
You are.
Okay.
Okay.
We don't have to get them out of the car outside the building.
So am I correct? To finish that explanation, I, and I may be way off base here, I always understood that as a place where you could drive the car in, shut the doors behind, then open the car? Is that?
That would be best case scenario, but I don't know that that's going to be possible.
Okay.
We'll have that fenced in areas that would send this or something perfect.
Okay.
I noticed, so I think this large, this large square, that is the lower right-hand corner.
Yep.
I noticed that this large square to lower right-hand corner is empty. That's where the holding cells, I think, are today.
That's your, the current, part of that large space is the holding cells. It's also part of the garage storage. Yeah.
Okay. So the thought is that's extra storage room?
Extra storage, expanded storage for what happens in the garage area currently.
Most of the process evidence and everything, weapons, I think, is a very expensive.
Lieutenant, do you ever imagine, I know that a Phoenixville Police Department is the, has the holding cells now that we use regionally. Is that, that's correct?
Sometimes.
Sometimes. But we-
Sometimes, sometimes pops down, sometimes shuts down.
Do you ever imagine a scenario where we would, on an emergency basis, need to have a holding cell and-
Temporary holding space is not a stuff.
Okay.
A cell opens up another whole level of lives, of insurance wise. We'll have a secure way of basically take one hand off of the other, the one we take off, we would look to like a hook or something like that, to keep them stationary. There's a bench, we currently, right now, we have a steel bench where we put people on.
Okay.
Where people put-
So have you and the chief had a chance to look at any of this? Or, okay.
I know the chief has not.
Okay. Your thoughts? Was there anything here that's?
Do we have an extra set of plans for Lieutenant?
There's actually two different versions of this, so I'd really rather sit down with the chief.
Okay.
Before I do.
Gotcha. Just wondering if there's anything that's glaring.
I haven't seen anything glaring.
Okay.
Question, which, which were-
Yeah. Yeah, that's, we're sort of in concept worlds still. Just making sure you, you know, anything glaring, any major things that we are missing or that we need would be, we'll submit this book at the end of the year as our final.
Is that evidence?
No, that's maintenance closet. That's where all of our sprinklers and things are. And IT room.
And where do we have the evidence? Is that going to be back here?
No, he was just saying that this is where they would have like a garage area to store, like, dirty stuff and clean their-
We're maintaining the current-
The evidence room?
Stairs that connect the administrative and offices in the Police Department. Are we doing anything for accessibility, elevator access between the floors?
We are including space for a future lift. Since this building is technically accessible from both levels, there's accessible parking. We're including, like, that gray space in the middle. It's called a limited, limited-use accessibility lift for if that need does arise, that someone does need to go between floors.
Where's the gray, the gray space?
In the stairwell. In the middle of the stairwell.
In the middle of the stairwell?
Middle.
Okay. I thought that was taupe.
Yeah, no.
So you are proposing some kind of lift there?
We are proposing a lift there, yes. We, after we looked at the level of renovation between both floors and the addition, the type of project that it is, there's probably going to be a comment that you may need if the need does arise, if someone does come on a wheelchair or is an employee in a wheelchair, to get between levels without going outside, getting into a car, and then coming in the accessible entry in the lower level.
It is common to provide for future accessibility rather than, if we do have both entrances, it's common. Where I work, they have the same, there's a shaft provided, but there's room for a shaft provided, but there's no, nothing installed there because there's no employees that need the accessibility between the floors on a regular basis.
So if needed, you incorporate that?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
As needed.
So I want to back you up one page real quick. I was just doing quick back in napkin math. When we looked at the page that gave the additional square footage, the reason these don't add up is because you're talking about walls and that sort of thing that aren't added into that number. Because if I look at the delta between what we have and what we're going to, it's about 1,000 feet.
Correct.
Added in admin. But up in the police, it's less than 1,000 feet, so maybe 1,900, but you show 2,600 square feet. That's because of-
Yeah, we had a one-
Infrastructure and walls.
We had a grossing factor for walls and infrastructure.
Right. Okay.
Yep.
So what you're showing really has the actual footage under here, is the usable square footage of what they'll have.
Usable, yep. Correct.
And then you add that factor in for all the-
Yeah.
Gotcha. So each is going to get roughly, well, we'll get 900 feet downstairs and 1,000 feet up here.
Correct.
All right.
We can move on then. Okay, so the Administration and Public Meeting Assembly Room, colors yellow for the room that we're in, and the green teal color for the formal Administration Department. You can see this is how it sits right, stands right now. We're in the yellow room, and then the office space behind us. And then the circulation space would be that sort of light gold color. That's more than generous, but that's like an example of space you would get with a grossing factor. So that goes to show you an example of our, what you just asked, Bob, that would include that. We're including a 1.3 in the addition. So demolition plan, and then this is the proposed plan. So I'll start from left to right, the room that we're in. We're proposing to slightly relocate the desk and the doors into this room to create for a more streamlined entry, assembly space, hoping to get more chairs, have an easier time egressing and ingressing. It was brought up at the last meeting, it's security concerns of these windows. We, I'll show you a later slide, but we are proposing an example of how to retrofit these existing walls to maintain the look of the building, but also have a little more safety.
So this, the size of this room does not change?
It doesn't. We are proposing to sort of rework some of these closet spaces and shrink the oversized circulation space behind us to add some, well, to more efficiently have storage and then add some space to this room. So if you look between the proposed slide and the existing slide with the two colors, you'll see the yellow does grow.
Mm-hmm.
And the circulation or that lighter gold space does shrink. And we are proposing a door to close off the stairway on both levels. So there won't necessarily be free roam between levels like there is now. It'll be, have to be designated if you want to go beyond into the stairwell. You know, you bring up a concern about the elevator or the shaft, so it'll be a little more, we're hoping it'll be a little more coordinated and not necessarily as free roam. Go ahead.
No, one question I have.
No one's ever told me they could not hear me. So the, the yellow portion, this room, so I see that there's, it almost looks like there's retractable walls that are intended for-
The far, the-
The far corners. So for example, right here, where this closet is, would that be, is that what's represented here by this, it looks like a retractable wall?
So the, the growth of the storage closets and the rework of some of the space outside gives, you know, a little new location for those closets. Now, we're proposing sliding doors rather than doors that pull.
Okay.
To maximize space. And if the room is crowded, you don't have to move chairs to get into the closet. You can just slide both doors, sorry.
But it's still storage space.
It's still storage space, correct.
Storage space, okay. And you said, you mentioned that the location of the entrance doors would change. They look pretty much in the same place as today.
It's very, it's, I know, it's visually conceiving, deceiving. The new entry door is kind of where this will be. So it goes straight.
You have a straight line.
You would have a straight line into the Admin Department. So currently, the doors go right out into the vestibule area over here, where we're proposing two new closets. And the stair, which is over here, will be the location of the other new closet, or the relocated closet. The door would be a straight shot into the hallway that is right there. And the egress door, which is needed because at times you have more than 50 people in this room, is moving to be closer to the main vestibule entrance, so it'll be there. I believe currently it's here. Is it behind?
It's right there.
Behind one of you. Yep.
Okay, now, if you compare, we still, this comes out, and that comes out. And the closets that are out there are removed, so it just makes this area a little smaller.
Anything further on this slide? There's another version of this with the highlights.
Also shut those to go.
So as we mentioned, we are hoping to increase the security and privacy measures here while streamlining the room layout for a little more functionality. We're proposing for the vestibule, the main vestibule, to be reworked a tad, and the circulation outside the hallway, right out here, to be reworked to make this space that we're in currently bigger, larger. And then, as we move to the Admin, the formal Administration Department, we're adding a conference or caucus room directly off the corridor that we're going to be exiting to here. We are proposing some high-density storage, some slight rework of the office space. You'll see the addition space noted with red dash lines in the back right. Those would be the private offices. And then you'll have some, the gray space is currently some storage, and it will remain that in a janitor's closet. Anything further on this slide?
The big gain here that we've all been looking for and are happy about is the addition of that conference room here. I know we've talked a lot about that, the lack of a caucus room or just a private meeting space, or just as simply a space to meet with residents that's not in this room. So that would be huge for us.
So you've got a total of six offices to work with. Storage area, and I see split into two bathrooms.
Correct, you're adding a-
And one for the office.
Yep, which is how it is now. Yep. Private, so just kind of a reworking of the office space right now. There's only one office in the Admin area. And the, but we also wanted to have some flex space because we have consultants who come in and meet, just areas that we can kind of all work on projects together.
Okay, if we flip the page from this, you'll see an image of the exterior of the room that we're in now. Talked a lot about strategies to help the security of this, this room in particular go up. The one that we're landing on and recommending, again, we're still in the world of concept and study, to keep the look of this building, because it's a unique-looking building, very prominent of the time period it was built. The walls that are behind you are what we call storefront or window walls. And they have three small panels at the bottom, which we're proposing to be a solid infill, so that would not only help with energy. Yep, those three. Yeah, so we're proposing a solid infill. We could add some insulation into those to help the energy transference, more energy in this room, help heating and cooling costs. And then the upper, larger panel, we're proposing a safety ballistic film. That's for privacy of you guys and safety of the people that are in here. That's the recommended, that's where we're at with that. We did think that, you know, rather than tearing out what's currently, we're going to try to make work what's here and continue, hopefully help blend it into the rest, keep it blended into the rest of the building.
Would the safety, would the safety film allow, right now, we have, I mean, I think we always have the blinds drawn.
Yep.
It would allow light to come in, but not allow people to look in to the-
Yeah, there's many variations of it. You could get as private as you want. You could make it totally opaque and no visual or light transmission. Or you could choose a happy medium between if you do want light in here or not. It's kind of a pick-your-flavor and-
That comes at a later date, I guess, as we approve what you've got or tweak it.
Of course, yeah.
And then come back and fill in the blanks on the details.
Yeah. Any, any other questions before we move to the other site, the Public Works Site? None? So if we flip, I think it's two slides from the last plan, just a brief snapshot from the site plan. Like I said, we are proposing- Just a brief snapshot from the site plan, like I said, we are proposing an addition for garage bays over there. Didn't quite nail down the best spot for that yet. So we're showing the two potential locations. Both are 1,400 square feet, one-story additions. You'll see the original historic, then, uh, stone building, 1,860 square feet. And then the, uh, expanded parking spaces and the site paving work. Same checklist as the other side. So the table or the, the numbers form on the next slide shows what the existing square footage is and what we're recommending. So for the original stone building, we're not recommending any additions or anything. We're just recommending, um, finished cosmetic upgrades, getting the building up to ADA code, and some mechanical, electrical, and plumbing upgrades as needed. So that would remain the same footprint. The, um, uh, road, Rhodes Building, currently 7,400 square feet. We're recommending an addition of about 1,000, 12, or 1,400 square feet. And the primary focus there would be an addition of a garage bay, which actually houses two garages, you'll see, and then an office area, so the Rhodes master can be with the rest of his colleagues and a break room for that building. There are room names on this plan. The next slide shows just one of those potential spots for the addition, so if you're looking at this page, uh, I know we read left to right, but right to left, the salt area is on the right of that geometry, that L. And in this particular location, we're proposing the addition on that side. You'll see it marked with a dashed red line. So it houses two garage bays and a break room. And, um, there are no changes to the, uh, overhead bays for the, the rest of the vehicles to the left. Any questions on, on that? And just the highlights that I mentioned. On the next slide sort of points you to those things. And then the last page is a solution summary. Um, I don't think we need to get re, re into this. It's just the project checklist that we've identified in the earlier meetings. And just some light three-dimensional graphics showing the admin building on the left, admin and police building on the left, and where that addition would be. And the Rhodes Department on the right and where one option of that addition would be. So we're including a tentative timeline. So as I said, we are at the end of our study portion. We're at the end of the, on the next slide or the next page. We're at the end of the concept, uh, period of this. So we'll submit, after some slight refinement, we'll submit a book to, to you guys and girls at the end of the month, or the end of this year, which is the end of the month also. And, um, it could go, uh, we're saying 18 months for, from board approval of an architect and design team to be hired. We would include about four months for, two months for more design meetings to refine all of these things that we've been talking about and the processes that we've set up with the team here. Two months to do construction documents, which is what, uh, contractors would give us bid numbers for. So the green block after, the, the red block would be bidding and permits. So that takes us to about six months from approval. At that time, you will have hard numbers or bid forms from contractors. And then upon that milestone, we're estimating about 12 months of construction. So we're saying from approval to move forward about 18 months, tentatively, depending on how things go.
Any questions?
Last one, um, last slide, which is probably the least fun slide. Highlight the word probable cost. We usually try to include a probable cost. And I emphasize the word probable because in the world we live in today, construction numbers change hourly, daily. But we do see a lot of these numbers. We get together with, uh, a lot of the contractors that we work with regularly. So we put a number based on the snapshot of where we are today. Again, needs refinement and unrefinement based on some of the comments, but we're calling the new construction, including the site work for this building, that, holding that at about 1.3 million. The renovation, which is the bulk of the work here, 2.1 million. The, for the renovation of the historic building, 370-ish thousand. Rhodes Department, which is a slight addition, but it's like an addition light, because there's not as much, um, 705,000, which brings the total cost at this point to 4.6 million. And then we include contingencies, which is a percentage of that for unforeseen costs and other soft costs like building permits. So that brings us into about 5.3 million dollars. And you can see we're seeing about a 5% escalation yearly now. So if you were to wait, um, or if you were to get these bids, which if, best case scenario would be 2025, it would be a 5% escalation if you were to wait to 2026 and 2027. That 5% number is based on trends that we're seeing for projects that we've been on hold with for periods of time, and we're seeing how the numbers were and how they are now. Yes.
So I, I, actually, a lot of these numbers seem, seem somewhat reasonable to me, dealing with construction projects. The one that stands out to me as being higher than I would have expected is the renovation of the historic 1,800 square foot building. I mean, uh, do you, can you give, I mean, obviously, you know, this is a little out of scope, but what, what do you think was, was going into that?
So because that building is historic and built, uh, you know, very complexly, the existing, getting that up to a, a level of code that's acceptable to today's standards requires higher level of labor and higher level of contractors to perform that. Like the, the construction of those walls is, opening up a wall like that is very different than opening up a wall to a building that was built in, in the 90s. Bringing water lines or, or addressing electrical deficiencies to a building like that is, is different than addressing that to a renovation of this building. So the cost per square foot over there is, was considered higher to alter based on where the time period of that building was built. I agree, it is probably high.
It seems really high. I mean, having done a lot of construction myself and just overseeing it.
Like the, the, uh, the overall principle for that building was to bring it up to, to have public in there, um, which is why that, you know, how, you know, doing that type of renovation and housing is, is slightly, I don't know, you're not inviting people to have public bathrooms and that kind of thing. Like, if you're going to say the public is coming to that building, there's a certain level of, of adjustment that's needed to bring that up to
So this is anticipating ADA compliant
Sure, yes, definitely.
Is, it's a two-story building today, right? So
Two-story.
It is, but I would not at all propose the second story, that we do anything with it other than empty it out and just yeah, maybe, I, I would not invite the public to the second story of that building.
Or you could even just make it a one-story building with high ceilings.
Yep. Yeah, I don't think that there would be any public use for that, that second story.
Is there, is there a reason why, um, there's only a sidewalk between the administration building and the police building and the, um, public works? I mean, it doesn't seem like it'd be extremely, you know, greater cost to put an actual
Road.
Road and just to allow actual free
Free passage between, yeah.
Vehicles between the, within the campus, I guess?
Within the campus, yeah. The, the road portion gets a little complex, more complex. That seemed like the, the, the need was there for people to move between and
I think I may be able to answer that. Our zoning, we have, is it 75 feet from the road? We can't build some, we can't build something. What's, what's our zoning for a, a front yard setback? Yeah, in this zone here. I think we had, when we proposed to put the, a, a pole barn in back there, we had to get zoning relief. And it was all because the setback was like 75 feet. And we couldn't fit in a road to match that.
Yeah, we're, uh, private drives and stuff don't, that's a separate part of the zoning. Uh, there's different setbacks for driveways and private roads. It's not the same as the building
But what I'm saying is, we couldn't, we couldn't fit everything in it when we wanted to do that.
But yeah, that's, that's
Because of the setback.
Yeah.
The original plans for this complex had a road out front that ran between it, and I believe the gravel of the previous behavior is going to be placed on, in place underneath there. I think it was just a bunch of
That's my understanding as well. Yeah, we can certainly, we, we discussed a potential driveway. It's not off the table at all. It was, this was just the
Seemed like the sidewalk was, it's on the existing plans, like to, to be done.
Yep.
So
But I agree, we've talked about a driveway between the two, maybe, even if it weren't necessarily open for public access, even if it were just for staff use, if we had a reason to not want public traffic between here and the road department, but I think it looks great.
Guys all had really good questions. Thank you.
Um, looks good.
So like I've, uh, mentioned, if, if this is approved, we will continue on meetings with the, the relative appropriate parties, refine some of these things that are being brought, being brought to the table and then continue on with that schedule and continue on with the, the meetings here with you all.
So next steps.
So next steps would be for us to get a proposal for the board to consider to hire them as the architect. If it be Alloy Five, to hire them to do the next step, to move into the next phase on that
Yep.
Timeline that, that he showed a couple of slides. So we need to get a proposal.
Bill, because this is considered professional, whatever, we don't, we don't have to go, okay.
Nope.
That was my question. Thank you.
We do not need to do an RFP. Yep, absolutely.
Anyone, anyone else?
Any other questions? James, thank you. Great job.
Did you have a question?
Public comment? Sure. Come on up and if you don't say your name, Martha will let you know you need to.
Hi, I'm Sue Aaron Shield. First of all, I think a road between here and there would look hideous, but that's just my opinion. The road going down to the police department. I, I always worry that that's too narrow and would get blocked by somebody that gets stuck in the snow or something and the police can't get out or
Yeah, we are, uh,
Widening it or?
We are widening it and adding, adding more parking there and direct, uh, direct access to the police equipment there. So definitely that's currently not too, seems like it's not too way all the time.
Oh, sorry, Sue Aaron Shield, Valley Park Road. The, uh, the other thing was, oh, now I can't remember. Oh, jeez. Oh, I'll have to come back for it.
All right. Any other public comment? All right, James, thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Yep, go ahead, Sue.
Hi, Sue Aaron Shield, Valley Park. Do we have the money to do this, or how do you raise the money without raising taxes, hopefully?
I think that's a discussion we need to have and, uh, really look at the budgeting going forward and see what money would cost if we needed to, to raise money. And so we, we definitely have to discuss that.
Yeah, we have, we have some funds that we've allocated for this, towards this project. Um, but there are other options out there that we would be seeking as well. Alloy Five would help us to seek grant funding, and there are other, other options that are available. So determining the funding sources would be a big piece of the project.
And then as the project progresses through these next steps, we can pull back and, and push forward with certain things, and that will hopefully, you know, affect the, the budgetary numbers.
Sorry. That reminded me. Now, what, why did you want to have the public over in the old building?
To, to I mean, my, my personal view is that the public should see benefit from the expenditure of taxpayer revenues for this project. And right now, there is no public meeting space that's available for township residents. We have this, this structure that's apart from the administrative offices, apart from the police station, that would be secure and could be opened up to the public for rentals or other public use or, or community meetings.
In addition, we sometimes have two meetings that clash. So our scheduling of different commissions that want to meet on the same night sometimes or exact sessions were limited. So if we have this with that as a backup, that helps us well.
That's a lot of money for an extra, an extra room though. Is that, with the historic restoration stuff, it is, I used to work for an architectural firm and we did a lot of historic restoration and it is, um, a lot more stuff to consider.
Yeah, part of it's security. I mean, you don't want to necessarily have the public have free, free access to this building if the staff isn't here. And we don't want to have to keep the staff here all night to just have a meeting room open for somebody or things like that. So I mean, uh, it's, it's not just to have a public room. It's to have a public room that's safe to access and keeps this building secure at odd hours of the day, or, you know, when staff's not available to cater to the public for that, for that meeting space. So rather than renting out like this room or allowing the public access to this room as like a meeting reservation, that, that's more secure. It keeps our staff safe, keeps, keeps our, keeps our building safe, keeps everything kind of. So it's not just an investment in space, it's an investment in security too.
All right. If there's no further comment, we'll move on. Thanks again, James. Great job.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we'll get into the regular business meeting, consent agenda, acceptance of minutes of the Board of Supervisors, November 8th, 2023. Business meeting, all departmental committee, commission, and council reports as posted and received by the Board of Supervisors for the month of November 30th, 2023. I'll make that motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any comment from the board, the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Treasurers report payment of bills, township manager.
Treasurers report for the month ending November 30th, we had a general fund balance of just over 5 million. It's up slightly over last month, but that was largely due to, um, we made a transfer last month that the board approved from one fund to another out of the real estate checking account into the general fund savings account. That's a normal transfer that we do just to move the tax revenue into the general fund account where we pay the bills out of. Um, at this point in the year, um, our, our revenue, um, we have, we've realized almost all of our revenue for the current year. Um, our tax numbers are slightly over budget or just at about budget. We are down over this time last year. Last year, the township had a really good year for real estate transfer taxes and earned income taxes. We're not down substantially, um, but there was a definite slow on the real estate transfer taxes, um, particularly in the last quarter this year. So that's where we're at, and all of the bills have been reviewed and are recommended for payment.
All right, I'll make a motion. We accept that report for a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any comments, questions? Approval of distribution, December 13th, 2023 of dispersments, I'm sorry.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Any comments, questions, all in favor? All right.
Aye.
Okay, old business, discussion of 2024 budget.
Okay, all me. Um, so this is on, so tonight the board will adopt the final budget. At the last meeting, the board authorized advertisement of the preliminary budget. So the reason I have this on for discussion is that a couple of adjustments were made as final numbers came in between the meeting where you adopted the preliminary or advertised the preliminary and tonight. So I'll just hit the line, it was not many changes, so I'll just hit the items that changed before you vote on the resolution to adopt the budget. Um, so the big thing that happened in the, in the expenses area, the health insurance benefits, so in that category, we saw an overall reduction of 72,665
we saw an overall reduction of seventy-two thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars that I was able to reduce that category of the budget by. And that was due completely to the change that the board authorized us switching from our existing health insurance carrier that we provide group benefits to township employees, moving into the Delaware Valley Health Trust. So we realized a significant savings there, so that was great. So that's that category. So that took that total category from the, the preliminary budget showed eight hundred and forty-eight thousand eighty-five dollars. That is now down to seven hundred seventy-five thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. And that includes all of our, that's every group health insurance benefit that the township provides to its staff. The other item that changed is in the general government category, this is salary for clerical staff, that's the name of the line item. That saw an increase from the preliminary budget amount of two hundred and twelve thousand six hundred dollars to two hundred and twenty-five thousand four hundred and forty dollars. That was just simply an accounting error that I corrected. So that was just a slight change there. That was about a two-point-nine percent change, so not, not substantial. And just as a reminder, we, we are able to make adjustments to the budget now, any reductions are fine from the preliminary advertised budget. We cannot make any increases in excess of ten percent in the aggregate or twenty-five percent to any major category and we're not doing that. So that changes the total budget. The other thing I, I did do in the revenue, I just mentioned with the real estate transfer tax being down, with the savings that we saw in the health insurance benefit and the amount I was able to adjust that, I did reduce our estimated revenue in real estate transfer taxes for 2024. I reduced that by twenty-five thousand just to be a little bit more conservative because we just weren't seeing the numbers this year that we were expecting. So I, I reduced that because we were able to with the savings that we saw. So overall, the new total for the 2024 budget, the revised revenue, I'm sorry, the revised expenses total is six million eight hundred and twenty-four thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars and twelve cents. And that includes, we were able to reduce the carryover by thirty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. So that's where we are.
Excellent. Any questions? Okay, I'll make a motion.
You can do it when we get to the resolutions or you could do the resolution now out of order, but you don't, you don't have to, we can just move on.
Just wait until you do the resolution.
Okay.
It's over here.
All right.
Yep.
All right, Discussion of Possible Motion of Delaware Valley Health Trust, EVHT, Ancillary Lines, STD, LTD and Life Program Proposal Summary.
Okay, me again. So this is, again, this is part of our transition to the Delaware Valley Health Trust. So when the board voted to authorize the township to join the Delaware, Delaware Valley Health Trust, we didn't yet. We were waiting on the proposals for the ancillary lines. And the ancillary lines are, the township provides short-term, long-term disability and life insurance to all of its employees. So the reason that this is on the agenda, because there is a question for the board, we have an opportunity to increase the coverage that's being offered to township staff at a savings. So we can actually spend less money than we were spending and get more coverage. So the proposal would involve, we could increase from fifty thousand life insurance coverage that we offer to every employee, we could double that and go to a hundred thousand at a savings of, we're still saving about fifteen thousand dollars a year. So the question is, I only need a motion if you would like to increase the coverage that we offer to that hundred thousand dollars. I do not need a motion if we keep it exactly the same.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
I'll make the motion that we. Okay. Got me, got me, got me score on you. How do you want this worded?
Get more coverage for less money?
Yeah, motion to. Okay. A motion, a motion to use Delaware Valley Health Trust to get more benefits and pay less money for them.
To get, to move from fifty thousand to one hundred thousand.
Yeah. I would, what do you want me to say? Tell me to make the motion, you know, whatever you want the motion to say.
Increasing coverage.
Coverage and a savings.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Okay, all right.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you.
All right.
And Tina got it all.
Yeah, Tina got it, yeah. She'll watch the video several times back.
Trust you, Tina.
Any comments, discussion from the board?
No.
Any comments from the public? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Discussion of Valley Forge Sewer Authority Act 537 Study, to you again.
Me again, maybe a little bit of Paul, but, so we talked about this back in, back in the summer, I think, back in the summer, yeah. The, this came about because the Valley Forge Sewer Authority has been for quite a while. They ask all municipalities if they're interested in selling any capacity back to them to let them know because they're seeking additional, additional capacity. So Tridifern Township offered to sell two hundred and fifty thousand of their EDUs back to the Sewer Authority. Because they made that offer, that prompted, that necessitated the Sewer Authority to conduct an Act 537 study so that they can submit it to DEP, so DEP can review it and see if, A, they would say that that's okay. And really the purpose of that is to make sure that number one, Tridifern doesn't sell it and then turn around and need the capacity and also that all of the other member municipalities and partner municipalities have capacity for what they need. So that's why we had to participate in the study. The board will ultimately need to adopt a resolution in order for the Sewer Authority to submit the study to DEP.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, just hit your mic.
I see two hundred and fifty thousand EDUs, EDU is an equivalent dwelling unit, normally in the sewer world, it'd be one for house. I can't imagine that they had the ability to build two hundred and fifty thousand houses.
Am I saying, I might.
It's, it's, it's not two hundred and fifty thousand EDUs, it's two hundred and fifty thousand gallons per day.
Okay, okay.
That was my mistake, thank you.
Didn't seem right.
Nope, I said that wrong, you're correct. It's gallons per day.
EDUs are two hundred and seventy-five.
Yes.
Gallons, so it's whatever that is.
Yes, forget I said that, gallons, they offered to sell two hundred and fifty thousand gallons per day of their capacity. So that's, I mean, I can go into more detail with it, we just got this study last week, so I have not delved into it completely and that's why the resolution is not on the agenda tonight for the board to accept, just so that.
When do they move that?
They'd like it by mid-January, so it'll be on the January agenda.
Excellent.
I did want to note that in the, in the study, they do have an appendancy that talks about having letters from the Chester County Planning Commission and the Chester County Health Department, neither of which were included at this time. So I don't know if they're still waiting to get that information, but I think the township should certainly wait to see what, you know, the county says on both, both ends of the spectrum there.
Excellent.
I'm, I'm not really quite sure who to ask this question to, so I'm going to just throw it out there. At one time, I'm going to say 2015, 2014, we were looking at updating our Act 537 plan. Would we be able to put the information that was gathered from this into our own so that we wouldn't have to spend the seventy-five thousand dollars to update our 537 plan?
Well, and, and we did do a review of this in March of 2021. EJ had us go through it, Gilmore had started it. And what we had done at that point is we looked at some of the, the EDUs that were already positioned for the township as well as looking at some parcels of land that if developed, we looked at the zoning, what could be the max density of them. And that's where we came up with the projections back then of, of what was going to be needed. So when we got, when, when Lori was requested this summer to take another look at this when Tridifern was starting this process, we looked at it and we, we basically forecasted in, in, in a scenario where these parcels of land are completely built out, you know, inclusive of the Reeves tract, some of these infills, as well as about two lots per year going from a septic to a, to a public system. We, we ended up with, I think it was five hundred and four EDUs that the township would, would potentially need in the next twenty years. So I don't know if we'd be able to incorporate our analysis into what they're trying to do here, but I think at this point we have the sewer capacity that we would need. And when we look at the report that Valley Forge has prepared, their charts and things like that, SCUCL is, we're currently working at like a ninety-two percent clip of what would, what we have projected as of today, which is actually pretty good. Some townships were grossly, they had taken way too many. You know, they're, they're at like a forty percent capacity. So we, we have done a very nice job in managing, you know, where we are and with the build out, we'd still be in pretty good shape, you know, with, with, with what Valley Forge is going to try to do is they're either going to, Tridifern sells that capacity or they will look to take this information and re-rate their facility, which is one of the options where they talk about it in the report in which that they are, they feel as if they can handle, I think it's like eleven million, eleven-point-seven-five million gallons per day, but they, they believe they could operate at almost a thirteen million capacity if it gets rerated. Additionally, they talk about that there was a third aeration tank that was not built on the original plan. It was, it had been prepared and then as they were going through, the DEP said that that was excessive at the time, so they didn't go ahead with it. So there is the opportunity, that, that's one of the alternate analyses that they included, is that a third aeration tank would be built. And I believe the cost of that was in the, I think, six million dollar range. I'm sorry, find, six-point-six million dollars that, that would cost to build the building as well as the new tank. So they are looking at a bunch of different venues and avenues to try to work with Tridifern and, and the townships that are in, in need of getting an extra capacity.
So we don't really need to do anything officially right now, we'll wait till next month until we get the, the rest of the information in. All right, any questions, comments, moving along? Motion to approve extension of memorandum of understanding for Lieutenant Fitz, Fitzsimmons to the Board of Supervisors' Annual Reorganization Meeting on January 2nd, 2024, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, any comments, discussions, questions, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, Bill, you've been extended. All right, two more days, you're going to be employed for at least two more days. All right, Motion to approve 2023 Library Contribution to the Amount of Eighty-Six Hundred Hours. This is a budgeted item and I'll make that motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any comments, questions from the board or public?
How do we determine the, the contribution amount? How do we determine the contribution amount? It just, it doesn't, it seems, it seems kind of low. I'm just wondering.
The library, the representative from the library came to us, I don't remember how many years ago, when he asked for five dollars per household?
They, they came in recently with like, like a couple of years ago with a request to increase it to a certain amount and this is the amount we approved. It was.
But it's the amount they asked for.
It came to roughly, what is it?
I think it was five dollars per household.
And then we increased it a couple of years ago. They, they, they come with a request to us and that's how they come up with the number, they just ask us for the money and that's how much we.
And this is what they asked for?
Yeah, we could provide more if we want.
Wow, okay.
But, but yeah, they, they asked for this much.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Accept Resignation of Historic Commission Member Randall Wagner, effective November 17th, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Accept Resignation of Historic Commission Member John Jarboe, effective November 17th, 2023, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any comments, questions, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Like to thank those two members for their service. Discussion of 2024 Meeting Calendar, discuss proposed dates of Board of Supervisors' Regular Workshop Meetings and All Commission Meetings, did everybody get a chance to look at them and? Ready to go?
Anybody have any comments or questions on it? Cause I certainly didn't, I thought it was fine.
Yeah, there were not any changes.
I was going to say.
The only change is the time of the planning commission meeting.
I was going to say that was at seven o'clock, right?
Yeah, they're now at seven o'clock, but none of the dates, none of the dates changed. Other than conflicts, but, but for standing meeting dates, nothing changed.
So the planning commission moved up their time?
Yep, the planning commission voted to change their meeting time from seven-thirty to seven o'clock.
I kind of wish the space would have also, but.
Lori, I do want to say the Regional Planning Committee has not officially adopted meeting dates. It did not officially adopt meeting dates at its last meeting.
That's okay, we don't advertise their dates.
Okay.
So that, those dates are really just on this for our use, but we do not advertise their meeting dates for them.
Yeah, we had, we had some, certain townships not, not able to attend the last meeting. We decided to table discussion to, to January. And as I'd mentioned to you prior to the meeting, we are contemplating holding in-person meetings. If we were to hold in-person meetings, would SCUCL Township facilities be available to host?
Yes, they actually reached out to me to verify those dates. So all of the dates that are on here, yes.
Oh, Ed did?
Yeah.
Ed reached out to you? Okay.
Okay.
I know, I know it used to be, but.
Any other questions, concerns with dates or times? And I'll make the motion to accept, do I hear a second?
Motion to advertise.
Oh, motion advertise, I'm sorry, make a motion to advertise. Now there.
Oh.
Let me read that out then.
Do you want to read that?
Motion advertise 2024.
Oh, we're doing that next month.
Ah, okay.
I'm jumping, I'm jumping the gun for Tina over here, she just wanted to show you.
Okay.
Make sure there were no conflicts.
So we're just, so we're just discussing.
Yeah.
Got, I got you, okay, my bad.
Which I would know if I read.
All right, then we'll go to the next item, motion to advertise the 2024 Board of Supervisors' Reorganization Meeting for January 2nd, 2024 at seven o'clock, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All right, discussion, comments, board public, all in favor? Aye, aye.
Aye.
The only comment I'll make about that is that just like last year, we're not going to do our business meeting that night. We'll keep our, so we'll end up having three meetings in January.
We'll have the swearing in for John on the reorganization, oh, no, no, we.
We will.
We'll do it official.
At the beginning of a term, you have to.
We will do it again.
So we'll do it again, okay.
He got sworn in for the balance of this term, he will get sworn in again for his election. A lot of swearing, yeah. So we will have.
So we'll have reorg on the second, but our actual meeting on the 10th.
On the 10th, correct, and then the workshop on the 25th.
Twenty-fifth, okay.
January's a busy month for us.
All right. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
You finish.
Aye.
You finish.
I interrupted, yeah.
Motion advertise twenty, the 2024 elected Board of Auditors' Reorg Meeting for January 3rd, 2024 at four o'clock, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion, comments, all in favor? Aye.
We have two new elected auditors this year.
Are they able to attend?
I was just going to say.
Why do they have two?
Well, one, one of them is not able to attend, but we got two, so we have three, so we'll have a quorum.
Good deal.
Okay, good.
All right, moving along, Resolutions and Ordinances, Approval of Resolution Number 2023-17, Adopting the 2024 Schedule, or SCUCL Township Budget. And I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Discussion, comments?
Lori, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Approval of Resolution 2023-18, Annual Tax Levy for 2024, I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion, comments?
Is that, is that a change from past years, is that consistent, is that, what, what?
Three, three mils?
The levy tax for twenty, twenty-four.
It's three, there was no change, there were no changes.
No, that's what I'm asking, is there any change?
Did you say thirty?
Three-point-oh, I think. It's three-point-zero.
Three-point. I was going to say, is there a?
It's been three-point-zero for a couple of years.
Okay, three-point-zero mils, okay.
Yeah, three-point-zero.
I'm just making sure there wasn't a typo. We did not raise it to thirty mils.
Thirty cents per a hundred.
30 cents for 100. 30 cents for 100.
Yeah, we're not school users if we don't charge 30 mils.
There have been, we had no changes to any of our taxes for 2024, so they're remaining the same.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, approved Resolution 2023-19, establishing the 2024 holiday dates. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion or comments from the board, public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of Resolution Number 2023-20, transfer of funds. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Discussion, comments? Board public?
The only thing I'll point out about this is that I haven't determined the final numbers, so this resolution authorizes the same we do every year, up to $500,000 into the Capital Roads Fund and up to $150,000 into the Municipal Complex Fund. That will be dependent upon how the numbers look as we get closer to the end of the year.
Excellent. All right. I think we did the motion and the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, two-minute reports, board liaisons. More than anything to report, we're going right to left today.
Not yet.
Historical Commission, oh, I'm sorry. You guys got me twice in one night. Historical Commission, other than the resignation of those two members, nothing. And EAC, there's really nothing to report. They are not meeting this month. Their next meeting will be in January. They will be discussing their budget and projects that they want to do for the year.
Okay, Mark, anything?
Nothing to report.
Danielle?
So the, probably the, I don't wanna say contentious, but the most substantive piece of discussion we had at the Regional Planning Committee meeting was whether to hold our meeting date, meetings in person. They've been holding them virtually since the pandemic. When we brought up the topic of the meeting dates, I expressed a desire to hold them in person. I think that it would, could foster more discussion, more collaboration if we would be meeting in person. There were some members who expressed concern about accessibility issues, about being able, the convenience of appearing virtually. And my opinion is, we are there as a public service for our constituencies and we should be meeting in person if possible. I would just be interested in hearing if, not, it's not a vote, of course, but taking the temperature of the rest of my board, if you have a thought, if, if the Schuylkill Township has a general position about preference of holding them in person, knowing that I would be the person who would actually be showing up at the meetings, not, not all of you. But if you had a thought on it.
What accessibility issues do they have with this building?
Oh, it's just the general, it's just the general feeling that it's, isn't it convenient to meet, meet virtually?
Yeah, we'd all love to be in our pajamas and at home right now, but you know, and like you just said, we do this for the public.
That and some of us have concerns about general, the general, well, I guess legality of continuing to meet virtually, but-
So we did get an opinion from our, the attorney that supports the Regional Planning Committee. She does not have a strong, a strong recommendation for us to move the meetings to, to in-person. She has stated that if we were to advertise, continue to advertise them three, three days in advance of the, the meeting date, that would be sufficient and we could hold them virtually. I, but it's going to be discussed the first meeting in January. And I would, it would be nice if I could represent whether, what our township's position on it is.
She wants to, she wants to meet virtually because she's the one who travels the farthest.
She also doesn't show up at all the meetings because she's not requested to. She just does a consultation, so she actually doesn't even go to the meetings. Yeah, it was, I'll, I'll vouch for, the, the conversation was better when it was in person and I can vouch for that. I did it for like five years and it was much better in person.
Yeah, I agree. I think if you can meet in person, you do so. You only fall back to the virtual if you can't.
I do, I do wanna say that our alternate to the meeting, Barbara Cohen, I, I'm not sure whether she, I haven't asked her, but if it was to be an in-person meeting, she may not be able to attend regularly. So we might just have to discuss that.
And we can, I can talk to the planning commissioners and find another volunteer for it too.
Does it have to be a member of the planning commission?
It could also, I mean, it could be, it could be staff, it could be another one of us, it could be, you know, somebody, you know. It could be generally somebody to represent the township as a second. So it could be somebody off of one of the commissions if they're really interested.
I'll put my name out there if you want it, if you need a second. I'll just put my name there.
Yeah, I think as far as, I mean, the meetings always used to be here in this, in this building. My concern with the meetings being fully virtual, we've discussed this before and we've actually looked at, looked into it, I think, in the past. It was always my understanding that the Sunshine Act requires there to be an in-person component for the public to participate.
I think that the way they got around that was to shoot out information about people who could call in and then be, you know, in the meeting. So, but that requires some prior planning.
So my, my feedback then would be for the discussion. If the meetings are going to be, if the meetings are gonna be in-person, we only have to advertise the first meeting of the year three days in advance. Everything else can be done 24 hours in advance. However, with that comes the requirement that the physical meeting location, the agenda be posted, so that would then fall on us. So if they're going to be deciding to change, to change-
Didn't we decide this? We looked into it and we said, since it's not our meeting, we don't have to do anything.
We don't advertise it. I handled that last year, but the agenda, if the meeting location is here, the agenda has to be posted physically at the-
If they advertise it as the meeting location for the public portion of the presentation.
So does that mean, does that-
If it's a public meeting, that if it's a publicly advertised meeting, the agenda must be posted at the physical location.
Okay.
So does that mean that, that all you have to do is print it out and tape it to the door?
It sounds, yes, it is as simple as that sounds, but I, we all know that's not all it is.
I know it's not. But I mean, that's what I mean, is that, it's not like you have to put it on our website and put it on Facebook and do a thousand other things.
We would need to, we would need to put it on the website, yes, because if it's being held here, which is fine, we can do all of that. I'm just saying, it would be my preference that they not be last-minute changes for that reason.
Well, so right now, Phoenixville Borough is posting the Zoom link and the agenda on their website. Perhaps they might continue to do that and allow people to join via Zoom. The board members could, the representatives could have, could meet here physically, connect to the Zoom on their own computers and still keep a Zoom option available for-
But wouldn't we need to have?
Yes.
Yes, no.
Why, why? I, right now, could connect to Zoom and have a Zoom meeting and have people call into the Zoom meeting that I'm on.
If you're, yeah.
Yeah, you could, you could always run it. It doesn't matter.
Yeah, if you're, absolutely. If you're willing to handle that.
Yeah. You just have to have somebody-
Now-
You just have to have somebody willing to run it.
The only issue with that too, and it's one of the reasons that we don't provide for the public to participate in our meetings on Zoom, we usually only offer it, we only offer it to the board members, is because if something happens and Zoom doesn't work, you have to cancel the meeting. Even if you're in public, if you've advertised it that the public can participate virtually and then it doesn't work, you have to cancel it.
I think that's happened to the school district.
Things to think about. I've had, yeah, it's happened to me before. Yeah, it's a headache, yeah. Just a lot to think, so I just wanna make sure that, you know, you have all the information for the discussion.
Yeah, and then I've-
The dates are fine. I've already told them that the meeting dates are available, so I have no issue with that. I just would prefer, if possible, to know in advance which ones are gonna be in-person.
Charleston, Charleston also said that they were gonna look into hosting.
Well, they have a lot better meeting tech than we do, so, except for our microphones. We like our microphones.
So if someone else wants to host, but, you know, so it sounds like the general temperature of the board is, it would probably, are we, in general, would be in favor of me going to an in-person meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Anything else? John, I don't think you have anything to report yet, but stay tuned, you will. All right, thank you, guys. Township manager, Lori?
Yes, just, just one thing because I've done a lot of talking tonight, but we are, I got a proposal that I'm, that I've moved forward with McMahon on to do. We've heard a lot of complaints from residents at Dorchester, at Dorchester Way, wanting a traffic signal there and we haven't done a warrant analysis in many, many years. So we've had a lot of residents question whether or not a signal can be installed there. You know, with the Sedgley Farms plans, like the question has been coming up a lot. So since we haven't looked into it in a while, I did get a proposal, so we are gonna have that study done. I don't know what the outcome will be. The answer still may be what it was many years ago, that it does not meet the, meet the warrants and we cannot put a traffic signal there or petition pen out to put one there if it doesn't meet the warrants. But it seems like a good time to have a traffic engineer look at the data and update it so that at least we will have a study and we can provide that information to the residents when they ask.
Do you need a motion from the board for that?
No.
Anything else?
It's cheap enough, exactly.
That was my question. It wasn't an exorbitant price to do it?
It's under 5,000, so I approved it.
Really? Okay, God bless you. Think you all, it will cut down on the volume of phone calls that I get.
All right. Anything else to report?
Do you know when that's gonna happen, the study itself?
It, after the holidays, so not until sometime in January and they will do it when school is in session and they'll, they'll, yep, exactly, correct, yep. All of those things, yes.
How long do they generally take to complete? Do you know?
I don't opt-in, but I will pull the-
It's in, it's in months.
Oh, yes.
It's on the scale of months.
It's a quick, it's a relatively quick turnaround, yeah.
Four to, four to six weeks or something.
Okay.
Yeah. They'll do all the counts probably in a couple of days, yeah.
All right. Anything else to report on your end? All right. Lieutenant Fitzsimmons, Chief Police, anything to report?
We had a very successful food drive, which was completed. We ended up, Lori decided to film us, our caravan leaving here and going down to Phoenixville and donating the food. We're in the middle of coat drive now. That's, I think it runs for another month. I have distributed the monthly report to all of you. If you have any questions, I'm available to answer any questions that you have.
Now I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, Township Engineer, Paul?
Yes, some news on Paul Lehman. They did have some laborers out and did some of the work and we went back and we inspected it with them. And there's still one inlet that we feel needs to be patched up a little bit more. Again, it's not that it's damaged, it's just the pickholes and things like that. They didn't do an adequate job on, on that one. And additionally, there was some area of topsoil that we don't feel was properly stabilized. So Dolly has agreed to go back out there, do the patchwork, get some additional stabilization. We'll go out there for the punch list and, and then present the pay application number two to the board.
Was that inspection done after this storm, this past weekend?
Prior.
It was prior?
Prior.
I'd be curious to know if anything happened after the storm this past weekend. There's a lot of sinkholes in my neighborhood. It's the only reason why I'm saying it.
Okay, all right. Well, I guess we didn't hear anything about, and complaints about Paul Lehman on a sinkhole or anything like that. I would think, if anything, the, the amount of rainfall may have disturbed, if they tried to stabilize it, it may have, it may have pushed away the seed and hay that they would have put down, so. But if they're, if they're smart, they would go and they would check it out and reapply it so it can get stabilized.
Great. Thanks, Paul. All right, Valley Forge Fire, anything to report?
Well, distributed, if there's any questions. And briefly, I'll just say, keep an eye on Facebook and look at your windows as we travel around with Santa this weekend. So we got some goodies and treats to hand out, so.
All right, Amazon gift cards?
For the special boys and girls. All day.
All day, Mark.
We have, we have a live Facebook tracker online, so if you click that link, you'll see.
And you know I like coffee, right?
We'll see what we can do. Depends on what time of the day.
You got a coffee order, you got a gift card order, anybody else?
Just depends what you're putting in my coffee.
Smarties for Mark.
Questions, comments, concerns?
No. No. Great job. Thanks, guys. Okay, additional business discussion of agenda items for upcoming workshops.
So our Jan, our next workshop, we do not have one in December. Our next workshop will be the January workshop and that's where we are planning to talk about projects and goals and priorities for 2024.
Okay.
Were we gonna potentially talk about the plastic bag man?
Yep. Yep.
That's on that.
Yeah, Upper Marion's now doing, doing one and-
It's already passed.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it's not implemented yet. I guess it's implemented-
No, it, it passed, but it's, it'll be, it's implemented January 1st. Lower Marion, I think, has also done one.
Yeah, Lower Marion, I think, is in-
Do you have, have you heard anything about the borough?
Yeah, they're going, they're, they're putting it back, back up. They got a draft that they're proposing. I'm sorry, that was discussed on the, that was less contentious than the in-person.
That's hysterical.
So any ideas for the next workshops? What do we wanna put down in addition to that?
I mean, I think we got the January one set up. We can talk about other ones in the January.
All right. Sounds good to me.
The sidewalk, the sidewalk project will be a big topic of discussion for that, for that project meeting.
Okay. Announcements, have we any? I did not see any up here. Did I miss them? Ah, there it is. Okay, on Saturday, December 16th, Santa Claus will be traveling around the township on a fire truck, giving out Amazon gift cards, Smarties, and coffee with who knows what in the coffee. Strike that.
Redact that for the moment.
It's, it's peppermints and rainbows.
It's gonna be a good time.
Peppermints and rainbows.
Get out and see Santa and salute to the fire trucks. To track Santa's location, visit the Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Company Facebook page. Schuylkill Township Administration Building will be closed on Mondays, December 25th and Tuesday, December 26th, an observance of the Christmas holiday. Monday, January 1st, 2024, an observance of New Year's Day. The Schuylkill Township Police Association Coat Drive will continue through January 31st, 2024. Kindly drop off your new or very gently-used coats at the Township Building during normal business hours. Any other announcements? Okay, public comment. We don't have any public left. I think our only person is gone. And with that, do you guys wanna talk about anything else? Motion we adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.